Chief, good evening.
Good evening.
Edgar, you're good?
Well, that's a leading question. Edgar, are you good?
Good evening.
Good evening, chiefs. Is there a plural of chiefs?
I think you just did it.
Chiefs?
Yes. Chiefs, plural.
What is a collection of chiefs?
Oh, there's many names for a collection of chiefs. None of which I could...
I take back that question. I'll look it up at grammarly.com when I get home. Alrighty. So since our... oh, we're waiting for a call.
We are.
Okay.
Good? Alright. Want to lead us off? This?
Yeah, that and this.
And... Bravo. I think all of this is speed-related. Yeah, there is.
Alright, so last month, we had six incidents, three arrests, one accident, ninety-five citations, four hundred and thirty calls for service, and state police assisted in recalls. It's here, so this is the speed, we call it a speed box.
Yeah.
On Old Boys Road.
Yep.
Essentially a black box that we scrapped to a tree. Does not show people's speed, doesn't show anything, it's just a black box. So they...
Yep.
Most people don't notice it.
Right.
No, Officer Westgate was really good in explaining how that whole, how that all worked.
We had this up for a month, from October 6th through October 14th. Okay, the first two pages are... Tells you the speed limit on the road is thirty. The enforcement times on the first page is ten miles an hour, and the second page is thirteen. What that means is if they go over ten, that's something we would stop for speeding.
Right.
Second page, if they go over thirteen, that's what we'd stop.
Yep.
And basically, what it's telling you on the first page is percent speeding is only four percent. So only four percent of the cars are going over ten miles per hour greater than the speed limit.
Yeah.
Second page, only one percent is going over thirteen miles an hour over the speed limit.
And that's all on that? I discussed this a little bit with... no, I meant the section of Old Boys Road, it's before the first sharp curve.
Yep, it's before the dog place.
It's the big long straightaway and before the dog place.
Before the dog place, and it can be going both ways.
Yeah.
So that, that third page, it tells you it's three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three.
I can't believe so...
Well, that's essentially double.
Yeah.
Because they have to go out once they come in.
Right, there's no other way.
Okay?
Yeah.
Slowest speed, seven. Probably Amazon driver.
Yeah, yeah.
Or anybody slowing down to turn into a driveway that happened to be right there. Fastest speed was fifty-eight, so there is...
And I know who that was. That was somebody like me who was late dropping off their dog and was like, "Rrrr!" Blowing back out of there.
Your average speed is thirty-one.
Yeah.
For the whole week. Your eighty-fifth percentile is thirty-six, enforcement rating as well. Just means that there's not a lot of speed going on that road.
So it's a thirty mile an hour road, and most people are going thirty-one miles an hour.
Twenty-seven to thirty-six is your pace speed.
Yeah. That's great.
It's really not... again, there are people speeding, but it's not an everyday occurrence, and it's not a throughout the whole day.
Okay, that's good to know. That was really good information from... how long did you have it up?
A week.
That's huge.
Um, we are gonna be putting it on Hackleboro.
Yes, thank you.
If Epsom needed it, so they're using it right now, so it is there. Um, they're gonna bring it out here as soon as they're done.
Hackleboro says thank you. That would be great.
Is there anywhere specific on that?
The hill going from like my driveway before the Orchard Road up. Because I think a lot of people pick up speed to get up the hill, but then coming down, it's like, "Ooh!"
The Orchard, is that on the straightaway?
The Orchard is... you're coming up the hill, and you're kind of curving gently, but you are... That seems to be the biggie.
Cause it's gotta be somewhat of a straightaway as it approaches.
Um, yeah, you could do from...
Before the turn?
From Abbott to, to the Orchard Road would probably tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if anybody's picking up speed coming up the hill, like sometimes the big logging trucks, they're gonna be booking it when they go past the Orchard Road.
Yeah. And then didn't we get a complaint, Old Gilman can? From a resident of that way?
Yes, yes. Of speeding?
Speeding. There was one...
I'm guessing?
Uh, I think he had a person that he had identified.
Yeah, he...
Yeah.
He was pretty sure he knew who it was.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it was on the lower end.
He was... yeah, I think it was on the lower end, yeah.
Yeah.
Lower end of the road or lower end of the age scale?
Yeah, and if it's the upper end, they typically take care of themselves up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Perre was in, um, he's on the lower end.
Okay.
And that's what he said, it was the lower end.
Alright, yeah.
But he was also concerned about someone on an electric bike or scooter?
Youngster on the electric bike, and I know, I talked to Justin, we'd already made contact with him.
Okay, good.
Talked to the electric bike? Really not much, we... they're not violating any rules or anything, but we have talked to them.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Alright.
Cool.
Yeah, anything else we need to know about that's lurking?
We'll, uh, we'll put that back out as soon as Epsom's done with it.
Okay.
I want to get a count of the results of that.
Great, thank you.
The only question that's out there now is, um, the purchase of one of these for the town itself.
Right.
This one was...
I don't remember.
It was like four thousand and something, but there was a...
Yeah, this one, I think, was close to six thousand dollars.
Oh, it depended on if it had the laptop or not.
Yeah.
Well, we don't need the laptop.
So...
Oh, you don't?
I have a laptop, so we can...
Oh, perfect.
Disconnect mine from...
So if, if...
Good.
Whether you wanna try and spend some money this year or put in the budget for next year.
Right. You were investigating a grant?
He, yeah, it was a...
We're going, so we have to, so the highway safety program we're doing is ended. We have to get approval for this quarter to be eligible for the grant for that for this quarter.
Yeah.
So we're working on that.
Yeah.
I would think it would depend on, you know, again, when we get the next round of budget, what we have left. And if Epsom is willing to loan it until like the next budget cycle, that'd be great. But, you know, if we can afford it, I would say it seems worth it.
Yeah, if they don't mind letting us use it, it's just obviously if we're gonna be using it constantly, that's a pain for everyone to come out and set it up, say, and bring their laptop, because you got users.
Yeah.
So it's not like you can just give it to me and have me set it up. I don't have the...
Right, right.
Software.
Software, yeah.
And I don't have to log in and all that. So they have to actually come out here and set it up. So I actually don't wanna take advantage of that either.
No, no.
Right.
Let's see where, we see where the budget shakes out, because it seems like a very useful tool.
It can be, and essentially, like you said, it's not like we're writing tickets off it, but it's, hey, so-and-so's complaining about speed. Okay, well, let's put this out here. And we may not need it for a month or two. Whenever someone says, hey, we got a lot of speed on this road. Okay, we have this to be able to see. And if there is speeding, it'll tell us a timeframe. So we'll know when we can stay out here, because, yeah, if someone's speeding on the road, well, when? Most people say all day, all through the day. And you can't sit out there all throughout the day.
Yeah.
So if we can narrow it down to a timeframe, okay, that's easier for me to tell an officer, go, hey, go sit on this road between this hour and this hour.
Yeah.
So it, it, it's a helpful tool to at least narrow down what we're looking for.
Well, and as you've mentioned, Scott, it depends too. People think that people are going a lot faster than they are, and this seems to really prove otherwise. Now, maybe they are cutting them close as they're walking on the side, but...
It's part of the two, I think.
Yeah.
Although, you know, and...
Where we don't have sidewalks, I mean, it does...
That's the thing, or shoulders.
Pretty narrow to begin with, so...
But we talked about doing the other road signs on the other corners and things like that. But that's, that's past where, where most people would be speeding, because it's a nice long straightaway.
It is.
And they're not, so that's good. Good, thank you.
Alright, yeah.
Thanks, chief, nope.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks.
So, thanks. Chief, I know you've got training tonight.
Oh, that's the one thing I forgot. I was looking at you, Chief Gamache, and thinking, um, I was doing road sign stuff this afternoon. I wanted to print out the thank you notes I have so that we could sign them.
Gotcha.
And pass them along, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get them, here.
Okay, sure. I'll be brief tonight. Two hundred and seventy-four emergency incidents to date. Not worthy incidents in the last month. Uh, we had, I think, three different carbon monoxide scares.
Oh.
And two of them were actually leaks, and, um, thank goodness they had detectors in their homes. So this is a reminder, and I put it out on social media, I put it in the newsletter. The carbon monoxide is odorless, tasteless, um, you can't smell it, uh, obviously, you know, and, uh, and it's a silent killer, they call it. So carbon monoxide detectors in your home, uh, and, you know, we put it out there, will help anyone. And I have access to free devices if people can't afford it. And we'll help them install them in their home, or even just install them for them if they're unable to, so...
Okay.
Can't emphasize that enough. Been in the interstate half a dozen times since the last time I saw you. Uh, most recent one was this morning at age of eighteen, ended up being a fatal, twenty-year-old male. Uh, touched patients, my crews that did respond there, um, you know, those are, those are always difficult. There's sometimes you see people that are human, you see, uh, they worked hard to save his life, um, and, uh, due to his very injuries, it, you know, passed away.
Oh, I read it, that's...
Uh, so, uh, but those, those incidents are never easy, so, um, yeah. But I, I had a, I had a, I had a crew out there this morning at one o'clock.
Well, that's where your training all kicks in too, so thank you for...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Fire Prevention Week, the category, the elementary school demo went well. We put a hundred and twenty-something children through. Uh, the Fire Marshal's office came down with their dog. Sure you saw some pictures on social media, I put some up. Uh, it was, uh, it went very well, very well received. We're doing Dewey School next week, we do them annually. Uh, those are the preschool-aged children, about thirty of them. We go and we do a demonstration there, uh, tailored to their age group, obviously. Uh, tomorrow is the elementary school's annual inspection. That has to be done by December fifteenth, and submitted to the state Fire Marshal's office. So I'm doing that tomorrow. They're on their game over there, they're running a pretty safe ship, so there's very rarely any issues over there. So, kudos to Principal Chubb and her staff for doing that. And the burning van, even though we had a day of rain, is still in effect, so we feel for the notice.
Okay.
Still seeking new members. Um, and then under the last heading, uh, log-in project with the ambulance, I'm still working on that. We're finalizing the, um, the contract, and that's still moving forward for January first takeover. I should have a set time for you by next month at this time. Uh, working to redo our local emergency operations plan, which is required by law every five years. Our last one was two thousand and twelve, uh, so we're going on fourteen years. Um, it was going with, you know, the emergency plan discusses what happens in the event of a logical emergency in town. It puts things on paper, but not having one affects your ability to access future grants and future resources from government. So it's important that we keep that up to date. Excuse me. I identified some areas that needed to be done, but keeping the, riding the ship up there and, and keeping things going, uh, this became a back runner, low priority project. Uh, now, Ken and I have been talking, uh, we're committed to getting this done by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. So we are on that. We spoke to a, a company today that kind of works and does that with us, so we'll move it forward with that. Uh, driveway numbering, uh, meaning that new driveways, it seems like I'm doing one a week now for the last, probably since, since May. Um, uh, you know, people wanted to build houses and driveway permits and all that stuff, so that's, you know, for every single one, I gotta go out and measure from one, the next driveway to the other one, and do a math, um, uh, math calculation, and assign a number, and enter it into the state database. And then they gotta come out, they gotta pin it, three nine one one, so it's a process to do even one, so... But they're not, they're not random numbers taken out of a hat.
No. I don't think people know that. It usually has something to do with how the distance from your...
It's pretty in-depth, it's pretty in-depth. Uh, West Road Development, I spent, uh, probably half the day last week working with the, um, developer, and, uh, they're looking for input on the fire side of things, so I partnered with the Fire Marshal's office. I read, I got some information later this afternoon, Ken, I'm gonna be sending to you. It's a little convoluted, it's, uh, it's not reading for the average person, so, uh, so we'll try to sum it up, and then when it comes time to making the delivery and, and go from there, so... But they, you know, I'm, I'm gonna work with them, but hopefully that, um, you know, the, um, they devise some fire protection down there. Um, let's see, the river signage will be coming out in the next couple of weeks. Obviously, people aren't swimming this time of year. Uh, we talked, uh, recently talked about it in a couple of minutes ago, but the smoke or CO detectors, uh, and we put it out, and I'm gonna probably put it in the November newsletter that, I mean, yeah, the November newsletter that... We have them available, if you can afford to buy one in your home, um, we have them available and...
Have you sent me your news yet?
Not yet, no.
It's time.
I know it is, I know it is. Thanks for kicking out my toes enough, I appreciate it.
If, if I don't find it from you, I'll put in again what you ran last month.
Every time my computer bings, I think it might be better.
I know. Send me your note! I'm trying to keep everybody safe.
Right. Uh, next month, I'm attending the annual carbon monoxide summit. It's a day-long summit for, of, of, uh, lessons and classes of people who work in the industry. Uh, and it's really good valuable information, so Herb and I go over that next month. Uh, our reporting platform is changing. It's a national, uh, National Emergency Response Incident Platform, and that's training, that's changing. So there's a lot of computer stuff and stuff that I'm working on, machines getting that done. And November is our auto extracaning, auto extrication training month. We usually have Russys towing dump two junk cars in the front lot, and we kind of spend two separate Mondays working with our extrication equipment, cutting doors and taking roofs off and popping doors and all that stuff. So it'll be the first two Mondays in November, we'll be doing that. And that's all I have.
Wait, don't go away. I gotta write this down, because I wanna come.
Well, I'll show you our, our email reminder.
Yes, yes, please do. When it pings, I'll know it's you. Um, two things, what did NERIS stand for?
Uh, National Emergency Reporting Incident System.
Okay, thank you. And what, when you're redoing the EOP, what exactly constitutes an emergency? Because I'm thinking again, like last winter, when we had a couple of severe storms, power went out, we had people who were complaining that there were people who were cold. I mean, what rises to a level of a emergency that we deal with?
Long-term power outage, uh, through, um, uh, roads closed because of winds, and for an extended period of time, people socked in because of snow.
Okay.
The Merrimack River, the Franklin Falls Dam, uh, failing and, you know, having a thing down there. So that's, uh, that level.
Okay.
Uh, is what that is. And it's really just a blueprint. Because any emergency is happening, we're not taking over, uh, taking, opening a three-ring binder and saying, what do we do now? You know what I mean, it's just kind of like a blueprint.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Richie, remember next?
May I?
Please.
My trustees come.
That's what I think.
Raising down your neck.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening!
Good evening!
Um, first and foremost, I wanna give a big thank you to the Board of Selectmen and Calvin, who came to my office, had some big questions about the budget. Um, had big questions about library governance, and how the trust works, and how Friends of Elkins Public Library works. And we spent an hour and a half together. Um, he, I really thank him for that, because he really took the time to ask some questions. He was surprised by the answers, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
That he took the time to try to understand it, and he left a happy man at the end of it, with, with some answers to his questions. So thank you for that, I always welcome that. If there are any questions that any of you have, um, that I haven't covered with, with Ken or Beth, you know, please, I welcome that. So that was, that was my big thanks.
Good, good.
Um, it didn't make the November newsletter, which I submitted earlier today. Um, but Lauren Prosper is a new hire. Cal helped me so well with new hire paperwork. Um, Lauren Prosper has been hired as the Children's Room Assistant. It's only six hours a week, because that's all I could kind of navigate. Um, with some of my other employers, employees changing their hours, I was able to move Lauren in, and we just absolutely had a huge need, uh, for an extra body. You know, children's programs are attracting thirty to forty youngsters, um, and that's not their caregivers, and their parents, and their grandparents. So we're putting sixty people into a room, and we need staff to help facilitate that. So, um, she, it's a, it's an ideal situation, and I'll announce that to the town, because she is our only Canterbury native, out of two in second grade. So Lauren, um, is a real child of Elkins Public Library.
And, and I can say that the newsletter has not yet even begun to go to press, so if you wanna put it in, just...
So I might have time to do it.
You, you do have time.
Lauren, I O... okay, thank you.
Quickly, if I can fit it on your page without having to cut out too much other stuff?
Yeah, it might be, watch out.
Alright.
Um, but thank you. Um, I have to update my carbon monoxide monitor.
Yes, you do.
That's another one I just put on there. Um, oh, Ken had asked me to talk to the Unitil representative, the PR guy. Um, spoke with him, wicked nice guy. Um, and it, I haven't checked the Unitil website, but I think it might already be up there.
I haven't checked it either.
So this was just, uh, it was a freelance writer of Unitil hired to just, um, positively promote the grant that we received for the weatherization. Um, and they wanted some little soundbites, and they took some pictures, and he came and met with me. Um, Ken had asked me to do that, it was great, because I could answer those questions. Well, most of which is that we have noticed the difference tremendously with our first few cold days. We're, we're not having to wear hats and mittens inside. Um, we're not having to use space heaters. Um, we noticed it the minute we got weatherization in terms of acoustics. That was not something we anticipated, that, the, yeah.
Yeah.
I just didn't think about that. But there was absolutely no soft substances other than the carpet up until the bottom of the flat ceiling. So acoustically, it's improved, um, cooling-wise. Beth had mentioned that, the farmer, Mark, the farm star.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It was a significant, so again, thank you for that. And I think it'll be a very nice story, um, when it comes out. He sent me the copy of it, um...
Send me a link when it comes.
I will, I will, I gotta look. Um, he was also freelance for, uh, Union Leader. So he wasn't sure if he was gonna try to sell it to Union Leader as well, but it will definitely be on the Unitil website.
Perfect.
Um, do, do. Um, Ken and I talked earlier about Capital Improvement Plan 2027. Um, I'm announcing it official. Um, I am not going for a warrant article next year to help with my, my heating. Um, my boiler is still working, it's on its twenty-third year. It's not efficient, we know we need to replace it. But if I didn't have to put forward a, you know, the trust, the trustees are willing to pay half. I'm also asking them for significant wage, uh, participation. And I'd rather not ask them for all that money in the same year. That trust contribution will be continuous, um, but they wanna pay a lot of the heating. So that's gonna go on 2027. Ken and I talked about that earlier. Um, Chief Gamache reminded me that this is probably something good to report to you in terms of when he's adding, um, nine-one-one numbers. Um, I'm up to ninety-eight, as of today, ninety-eight new patron accounts in this year alone. That is entire households, that's not individuals, because we do family accounts. So that's an entire household, um, whether they're moving into an existing house, whether they're building a new house. Uh, but ninety-seven is a lot. Um, last year was eighty-two, the year before that was sixty-one. So since COVID, uh, you know, last five years, we've experienced more than fifty, which traditionally was maybe thirty patron accounts. So, um, we're up to one thousand two hundred and forty-two registered households, which is not too bad considering we have twenty-three hundred residents. So we feel really good about that.
One thousand two hundred and forty-two households?
Uh...
Did you say?
One thousand two, yes, households, patron accounts.
Okay, wow.
So that's, um, I'd have to look at our state statistics to show, you know, what percentage of our population, but just simple math will tell us, that's, that's pretty accurate. Um, so we find ourselves in the midst of our usually busy, um, programming schedule, but Halloween events, Polar Express, Mrs. Claus, um, we're gearing up for those events. And we were so pleased to hear that tree lighting is not the same night as Polar Express, so...
Please tell me it's not the night after Thanksgiving.
It's, oh, uh, we are not. The tree lighting is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Polar Express...
Yeah, oh, no, I remember it was crazy last year.
Which was great. So that was kind of a, a, a problem we were having, um, just in terms of, you know, it's a wonderful problem to have, but I don't know if you've noticed in this town, like, any given night, when I drive out here at like seven or eight o'clock at night, there's like three things happening all the time. It's such a busy place, which is a wonderful problem to have. Um, and I think that's all I have. Any questions for you?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say yes?
Say hello to the trustees.
I will.
You got an extra one?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Unpaid receivables. A lot have changed since the last...
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
I'm seeing a lot of taxes coming in, so... Hopefully, when tax rate gets set and we start signing out bills again, people will remember that.
Yeah. So, uh, I think the last time we talked about taxes, um, I asked you if you had any contact with Bueller? Still nothing? When would they go up for D D? Would it be twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah. Alright.
And what about Lovering still?
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Alright. October. When did the bills go out for the next?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet, yeah.
So we don't have tax rate.
Right, sure.
Then I won't spend my money.
Mm-hmm. Alright.
Questions for me?
Nothing, at least from me.
I don't think so, no.
I have a question.
Oh.
Yeah. We have election coming up?
It is March.
Just March?
Yeah, nothing, nothing, no.
Nothing, November.
So next year.
A little bit of a rest, John.
I didn't know I was set.
I know. Yeah, and I think we're all okay with that.
Yep.
Busy year last year. You good?
Yes, I just saw the name that I wasn't expecting, so...
Gotcha.
That's what I was, okay.
Okay, understood, yeah. Thanks, Sam. Sir!
We're gonna try and ship some paper or cardboard tomorrow. Maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Salt sheds full.
Yeah.
My phone says snow next week.
It does not.
One to two inches Wednesday.
Here? Oh, give me a break.
It'll change by then.
Yeah, yeah, but...
Yeah, it'll be eighty, eighty. The way it's been going.
Little bit of surprise on the Packer inspection, six thousand dollars worth.
What was that for, John?
Rear brakes, rear springs, uh, sensor.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
Hmm.
The longer it stayed there, the more they looked, stuck looking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. And the loader, right? Or you're probably gonna talk about that anyway.
Uh, we can mention the loader, um, I called, uh, the dealer, uh, because we're leaking, uh, brake fluid out of the mass facilities into the axles.
Yeah.
So to re-seal is four thousand an axle.
An axle?
Per, it's two axles.
Oh, jeez.
And that's not doing brakes, that's just resealing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the articulation bearings is gone, especially in the bottom. And when that happens, the front driveshaft collapses too far, and basically, the machine stopped running at that point. Um, the last time we did this, we took the driveshaft off and ran it with rear-wheel drive for a while. That wasn't impressive.
Hmm, I'll bet.
Um...
Invented, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, that's sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But that's just fallbacks, and they don't know until they get in there, and if they get a line bore and such. So, uh, if you're looking at the new budget, uh, went back to the forty-five hundred for regular maintenance, and then, uh, fifteen for network.
Yeah.
If I've got money this year, I'd love to send... If I've got money this year, I'd love to send it down before it gets up.
Think that might be our answer on the black box for uh.
Um because I was talking, um we'd like to see it hang around for a couple more years. Uh the backhoe's doing the loader work.
Yeah.
And we plan that way, but.
Yeah. John, the um the loader, though, you use it, I know, to put the. The spread, right, thank you, the spreaders.
Yeah. That's its major work and Dave uses it for moving the boxes and compacting and.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I use right now to move the trailers.
Right, can the backhoe do that, though?
It could do everything but move the trailers.
Okay, wow. That's a lot more, they can lift a lot more weight than I thought, then, the backhoe, yeah.
So if you need to move the move the trailers, then what do you do? What do we have to move the trailers?
I would.
At this time?
To call someone with a truck.
Yeah.
That hasn't been successful in years past.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh most of the trucks are up and running, we're starting to get some ready for winter and we're grading as we can. Um I had a resident call, that's why I was coming in late. Um the end of Ayers Road, the class six section.
Yep.
Yeah.
She was in the very last house. Somehow the cars are able to drive even further. Now, it's quite, yeah, it's quite a drop off off the class six section of her driveway.
Sure is.
And they're going down there and there's.
Are they getting back out?
They're getting back out.
And they're to what purpose?
Undergarments and such.
Okay.
So she's not impressed with the activity, let's say. Uh didn't know if they could. Gate it or such, and I says, class six road. Still public access and where they don't actually own that.
Yeah.
Where does the end of that, where does Ayers, does it go through?
It it goes through to Burl, but in the very bottom, there's two old bridge abutments and no bridge.
Okay.
And there's a beaver dam higher than when you're standing there, you can't see over it.
Yeah.
You're trying to say something.
We. Beth and I, and this is gonna come up a little later, um attended a webinar on class six roads. Town can put gates up, they can be subject to gates and bars.
Yep.
Gates can't be locked.
Right.
It's it's a deterrent for people that aren't gonna get out of their cars and hop and check the gate.
Yep, yep.
That that the best, um so.
But I can't remember the.
Little stronger than what I said to her because I didn't see her having livestock trying to cross and that was the reason for gates and bars before.
Right.
Basically livestock control.
Yeah, but you can't, what I can't remember about, uh off the top of my head is, um do you have to vote to have it? Have put up the gates and bars, or is, are they all subject to gates?
Any class six road is subject to gates and bars.
Okay.
But again, they can't be locked and it's really to keep the honest people honest.
Well, if it's if it's.
If you're having problems.
If it's partiers and they seem to be having problems and um.
Whether it would deter, uh it'd be hard to deter.
And unless you.
And then the cost.
Yeah.
There's a cost obviously associated with putting something like that.
What do you do otherwise if there's a problem with people partying down there, which could be a problem, somebody gets hurt and they're down in the.
So enforcement by the police.
Yeah.
It's a public way, we can't stop them from going down there, but if they're illegal activity, you know, trash or something like that. That's the only thing you could do.
Can our little black box go down there and see what the traffic is actually on the end of Ayers Road? Maybe it's, I don't know, but wow. Okay.
I can mention that to the police chief and, you know, they don't have. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any of our SUVs down there, I wouldn't.
Those are pretty good drop.
Yeah, yeah.
How the car is making it?
You know, that's what she's surprised too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is more concerning to her what, and it's not just once, it it's been multiple.
That.
I'll talk with John and we'll try and get together with the chief and see if, uh you know, we can talk to the resident. See if there's specific days or times and.
Yeah.
It seems like it's a big accident waiting to happen from that.
Yeah, does she see the vehicles, John, when they go down there?
She has seen the vehicle.
Yeah.
And they're also going down uh Windfall.
Yep.
Um the logger over there is having issues.
Yeah. I was just thinking maybe if she calls when she sees a vehicle.
Yeah.
Rather, you know, cause I know we can't devote an officer, you know, to sitting there, so.
And there there's a logging road to the left of her driveway. And I says, I'm surprised they don't go that way, cause that looks like the condition of the road. Much more drivable.
Yeah.
And then they'll go in there.
Maybe it's too obvious.
Yeah.
So whether they're following Google and they found this spot, like it or what. I'm looking at my phone, cause I got a text, um Ayers Road reclaiming ten twenty eight. Paving ten thirty, Burl Road paving ten thirty one. Hackleboro eleven two.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's what I got.
Alright, thanks.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
Gosh. I'm glad I don't own heavy equipment because it just sounds like it's just waiting to break. Only cause you use it, wow, alright.
Alright, thanks, John. Um what do you think, wanna sign stuff?
Sure.
Alright.
You're gonna yell at me, cause I'm gonna jump, but I just have a question.
Sure.
Do we need to talk, um lights at the highway garage while we have Monsieur La Highway here with us?
Actually really good thinking, thank you for noticing.
Ken, if you want.
Sure.
I don't, I just didn't know if.
No, that's a really good idea.
If you had to weigh in on the conversation so long as you're here.
Yeah.
I don't wanna mess up your careful paperwork.
So we get the total for the estimate for the lights. Um it was ten thousand nine hundred ninety with three um motion lights.
Yep.
We talked about uh one of the doors does not have a light switch next to it, the door that they use most of the time.
Right.
So the thought was that we would put a motion for that one.
Yep.
And then there's a pass door on one of the garage doors, so that might be a good place for motion light. And then there is a pass door down at the far end of the bay, on the west side of the building. Um it has light switches, what we thought we're putting in, so the total would. The the motions are fairly expensive, but um it's eleven thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Um for the motions, for those three motions and then the rest of them. Unitil will pay five thousand dollars uh as a rebate and finance the balance on the electric bill.
Hmm.
I don't know how long that is is gonna go.
Yeah, and is there interest?
I don't know, I don't know, so um but that's. Now, the we we would have to come up with the money upfront.
Right.
Um we have, our our building maintenance line for that building is over budget already. Because we had to replace the septic pumps and the water softener.
Yep.
Um we do have sixteen thousand dollars left in the building maintenance gap reserve. That would more or less deplete that fund.
Yeah.
Um but as it is, stands now, there's only eight lights working.
Pretty much down to that.
In the building, so um I don't, I'm not sure what our options are.
Right.
Well, the guys, they have to have lights, I mean, we we all know that.
Yeah.
More lights.
Right, they have to have lights that they can see to work and and not trip over something or have something fall on them.
We have not put money in the building maintenance um fund. Um I'm sorry, we didn't put five thousand dollars in in twenty five.
Okay.
If we do this, I think we'll have to add to that for twenty six.
Yeah.
I think we'd have to put ten thousand in at least to get it built back up a little bit.
Yeah, and I think it's the building ages, unfortunately, right?
That was my first thought, too, it's not getting any younger.
Operating budget, we'd have to bump the maintenance line up a little bit.
Yep, I think so as well, yeah, so.
Um our well pump, we replaced the well pump in, I think, two thousand and sixteen.
Yep.
Um and the well company was surprised it lasted as long as it did.
Yeah.
There's so much iron in the water up there, um so. I have that, to me, that would probably be the next big expensive we might end up having to put in there.
Yeah.
And that too would come out of that building um maintenance fund, yeah.
Most likely, yeah, um. We did have an energy audit of the building, um one company went through. The energy committee would like to have a second auditor company come through. Um they're looking at the lights in the office portion of the building and the heating systems.
Okay.
So uh we'll see what happens there.
Yeah.
And we're also asking them to look at fans for the um high bays in the garage, in the highway garage and the.
Yeah.
Um fire department.
Right.
Are the, is, the highway department is considered high bays too, is correct? John, can I come up and get a tour? I haven't been in that part of the building in forever.
Probably not tomorrow morning.
No, not tomorrow morning, I can guarantee it won't be tomorrow morning, I'll I'll text you sometime.
Six thirty.
No, no. I'm still drinking coffee then and coming too, but.
They drink coffee.
I'll bring coffee, how about that, some morning, I'll bring coffee if you give me a tour, alright.
Alright, so what do we need to uh?
So I I, the electrician is waiting for you guys to determine what you wanna do.
Yeah.
And then if it's a go, then I'll notify Unitil, we'll get things going and the electrician will schedule it in.
Yeah.
Um he has a lift, so he doesn't have to rent the lift, so.
Great, okay.
I think, you know, um he would be ready within a couple of weeks to to do it, he'd have to buy the material and stuff, so.
What do you think?
Um well, it seems like it's something that we need to do, the only thing I would say is I would be curious to see. Um if they're going to finance the rest of it, if they're, what the interest is, because there's going to be interest and um.
Not necessarily, actually.
Really?
It might surprise me.
It may be no interest, I I don't know.
Oh, well, then that would be great.
It kinda surprised me that they were even gonna do that.
Yeah, so yeah, I would say we've gotta, gotta proceed with that and um do we need to wait to find out what actually? I mean, you know what's in that line item. But even if we don't vote to put more in there, can we squeak by with, if we take the eleven grand out? I mean, how soon before we would get the five thousand rebate?
I, it, it doesn't take too long, they're usually within a couple of months.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
I I can't see you working in the dark all winter if.
No.
It doesn't seem to make much sense, then we're going to have something else broken and something fall on your foot and then we're really going to be in trouble, so. That would not be good. So I would, I would say if we can do it, it just seems reasonable.
I think so, too.
Okay.
Calvin? No, he says yes.
There you go.
Okay.
Alright. Alright. Alright, so let's go back to signing.
Thank you.
Thank you, glad you called it. Alright, I've got an accounts payable manifest in the amount of sixty two thousand five hundred fifteen dollars and eighteen cents.
I so moved.
Alright, I'll second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So I can't sign in green, green sparkly pen would be bad.
I've got a pen if you need that, but black, black ink. Alright, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of fifty two thousand five hundred sixty eight dollars and eighty eight cents.
Uh so moved.
I'll second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we've got some minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it, I I read them this afternoon, actually, I know you had some, yeah, I didn't have anything that I that I saw, so.
Here's um just a couple of things, um.
I'm just gonna look on my uh phone.
Um they're they're pretty simple, which is why they're printed out, so on line sixty four, um I say. And placement of a you, of a your speed is sign, um just putting in parentheses after that. Um an electric, uh a flashing electric sign which detects speed and displays it, just to explain.
Yeah.
What exactly I'm talking about, um and then on line one oh eight, um. It said, uh a few people who are bad at estimating speed, change bad at estimating speed to not experience the estimating speed of cars passing them while they are walking.
Only cause that's, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the last one is on line one ninety seven, the select board decided not to make an exception for political signs, change it to. This select board decided that political signs should not be allowed on town on property in the center. So it's three, three simple changes and a bunch of grammatic ones.
Sounds good to me. Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I will second to that.
All those in favor, aye?
And then you've got um the, so that's for the October sixth minutes and then you have the October tenth minutes, you know.
From, they were exactly.
Very, very well done, Scott.
Brief into the point, alright, so I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
I will second that.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Alright. Alright, I think that's everything we had to sign, right? It's the CIP. Alright, Ken, you wanna talk about?
Sure, the that webinar.
Yep.
Um so Beth and I watched it, it was what, an hour, Paul and Beth?
Yep.
Um put on by the HMA, um a couple of their attorneys, their staff attorneys. Not a lot of new information from my perspective, but um if anybody, I think Beth and I talked about it. Um it would be good, we will get copies of the webinar and.
I'd like to see it, actually.
Have uh and there was a PowerPoint that went along with it.
Good.
Uh we would like to get that out to the planning board as well as the ZBA.
Yeah.
Um there is one thing, because of the change of uh legislation. Uh as far as building on class six roads, that's going to take effect July first of two thousand twenty six. And that is gonna be an important um distinction for the planning board as well as ZBA. As well as you guys.
Yeah.
To determine uh whether to, we can put a building, house on the road.
Well, and they were very clear that, you know, there's, that the town still does have a lot of control, so long as you have your ordinances in effect.
Yeah.
And and that you are set before this deadline, so.
And our, our building ordinance does say that um um we need. You need frontage on a class five or a better road, says that right now.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to build on a class six road, even if you met the requirements of the the new law, you would need a variance. So it's not just a a a get out of jail free card, it's just, you would, you would still need, you would need a variance. Uh as it stands now, that process, you guys kinda go around that process. By allowing the waiver and the road improvement uh um plan. So but in the future, they would, they would need a variance. Plan, so but in the future, they would they would need a variance if they met all the other requirements of the new law.
Right.
It also went in, it was very interesting, I thought, the whole discussion about what it meant to have a property be insurable.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, what what are the restraints on that? Can you just say you're insured or can you self insure, whatever? They they uh covered that in great detail, which I thought was very helpful to know.
Yeah, so in theory, after the new law takes effect, if someone goes through the ZBA, ZBA approves them. Does the select board still get to weigh in or or is?
They would, the select board would weigh in during the ZBA process, during the variance process.
Right.
Um, the a a road waiver, class six road waiver is still or private class six private road waiver.
Yeah.
Is still required.
Yeah.
That so as part of our policy as it stands now, it's the road waiver as well as the road improvement plan. I don't know, I think we'd have to check and see if you can still enforce the road improvement plan.
Right.
Um, I think that was part of part of the general discussion as far as the waiver was concerned was that with the. And and this is the reason why the the road improvement plan was put into effect was that most, in most cases. Emergency services would try to reach the property.
Hmm.
And with the cost of emergency vehicles at a million plus now.
Yeah.
Um, the towns are saying, yes, we know the fire department is gonna try and reach the the property. Um, and we'd like to have that road in some kind of condition where a fire truck could potentially reach that property.
Right.
And not do a whole bunch of damage to it.
Right.
And that's that's why we put the road improvement plan into into effect many years ago.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if that can still be required or not.
Okay.
But the fact that you can require it, have also frontage on a class five road, to me is huge, because then those class six roads that go out into the middle of nowhere. You really can't, it's not a, as you say, it's not a get out of jail free card to just build there.
Yeah.
You still have to meet other requirements. You just have to make sure that you actually had that requirement.
Right, and and we do now, so.
Yeah.
Um, but again, I think Beth and I both agreed that this would be a good uh webinar for the planning board as well as ZBA.
Yeah.
To to uh watch at some point.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds.
As soon as it becomes available, we'll we'll get it and Beth was gonna, we're gonna print out the PowerPoints and Beth was gonna make some notes on them. Uh, from her notes that she took.
Mm-hmm.
And uh we'll try and give a whole package to each each board.
Good deal. That sounds good.
We should have a viewing night here on the with popcorn. It's fun, I've done it before.
Team building.
It is.
All right, next letter from resident regarding certificate of occupancy. I did read your email, I'm assuming you did as well.
I didn't read the, did I read the email? We talked about it this morning, so, yeah.
We did, so the letter here is from a resident, um, he's not the property owner, his daughter is the property owner. But um I I guess he's representing her or whatever, but um. Says to Canterbury Sluckman, I'm trying to get a CO on seventeen Nottingham Road. Uh, Joel French, the building inspector, sent me a letter stating uh. Um, that the letter that that uh he would not issue the CO. I have the letter here. Um. After receiving the building plans, assessing data, Canterbury zoning rules and the state of Manhattan ADU laws. In two thousand twenty five, Manhattan House Bill five seventy seven, the ADU request does not fall within the requirements of the rules due to the square footage of each floor. Is greater than a thousand square feet. The building size thirty by forty is twelve hundred square feet per floor. You can apply for a. Um, conditional use permit or special exception, which I talked to the building inspector and it should be a variance.
Yeah.
Uh. And due to there not being an open and pre-communication between the floor two floors, I cannot issue a certificate of occupancy for a single family residence. Um, so during construction, the building inspector visited the property and informed the the builder and the resident. Or the owner, that they needed at the time, a stairway leading from the first floor down to the second floor where the ADU is. Um, they did not install that, um, so they did not get a s- a certificate of occupancy. The law changed, um, that allows an ADU to be an attached ADU without uh common access. However, there is still a restriction in Canterbury on ADUs, attached ADUs, it can, that can only be a thousand square feet.
And this is what, twelve hundred?
Pardon me?
Twelve hundred.
And this is twelve hundred square feet. So however, the utility room in question um is sixteen by sixteen. So it would drop the square footage below the thousand square foot um limit. But uh I sent a note to um. Legal and asked them, does Manhattan's law state that uh it has to be? Just the ADU, just the living space or is utility room?
Right.
Their answer was uh, says based on your local ordinance and practice, the law does not provide such specific definitions. Of what space you will be considered part of the square footage analysis. Um, I spoke with the building inspector this morning, his opinion is still the same. Uh, for one specific reason, and that was um this utility room serves the entire building. If there was to be a problem with the HVAC system, heating, plumbing, whatever is in the utility room. Um, it would require access through the ADU. There are tenant laws that that require notification for a landlord. To access the tenant's property, um, and he feels that that could be a problem. If if the furnace went down in the middle of winter and the tenant wasn't available to allow the landlord access to the building. Or the tenant refused.
Right, so there is no exit to the outside.
There's a road from the.
Yeah.
And I'll I'll have a tour.
From the utility room, but there is obviously from the, yeah, okay.
So here is the floor plan, you can see the utility room is in the buried area of the building.
Yeah.
So this shows, it's a walkout basement, so this is the a covered porch. This is the entrance into the into the ADU, the lower unit.
Yeah.
So you have living space and then the utility room is in the far corner and you can see there's no access to the exit outside of the building from there.
Yeah.
The owner of the property and um Mr. Pelkey were not available to come to the meeting tonight.
Okay.
So Joel believes it should be included as in the footprint of the ADU as.
Yes, as as it should, it it should count as, so we put it at twelve hundred square feet.
Right.
Okay, so that's the utility room.
Which is also looks like pretty much storage too, so storage, I'm assuming for the entire house or just for the ADU?
I don't know.
I mean, it would it wouldn't make sense if there's no access from upstairs for it to be stored for the upstairs.
I wouldn't think so, I I don't know.
So in 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 lieu of information, let us assume. Since that's all we can do is that if this has only got access from the ADU and it's used, it looks like mostly for storage.
Well, no, they've got, you know, they've there's a uh somewhere in one of the pictures, I think the boiler, it looked like electric panels.
Mm-hmm, it shows right here.
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
So it looks like one whole wall is all uh utilities and then you have some shelving for storage and then there's a blank wall here.
Right.
I mean, I I this is the first time I've I've had to really think about something like this, but if the only access to this space is through the ADU. I would count it as part of the ADU, even if the equipment in there is servicing the top part of the house.
And that's where the building inspector has landed.
Yeah.
I mean, if there was another, an exterior access and this door could be locked and it was only available from the outside and these people didn't get to use it, I'd say no, but that's not the case.
Right.
I mean, they could easily put exercise equipment in there or whatever.
Yeah.
So I would intend, I would I would include it. But then what does that mean? So we say it's included and then it's above the limit of the square footage for an ADU, what happens next?
So could not be an ADU and they would be in violation of zoning. They would not get a a certificate of occupancy and it would be in violation of zoning, so we go through that process.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Ken, who was the letter from?
The letter was from Michael Pelkey and the owner is Donald Lockrow.
Okay. And you think this is like a father representative?
I believe it is, yes.
I agree with Joel's reasoning. I think it makes sense to me too.
Right, um. So I will draft a letter to Mr. Pelkey advising him that you agree with the building inspector and.
Yeah.
Um, that he can work with the building inspector to try and come up with a reasonable.
They may be able to come up with a plan that.
Maybe they'll come up with a plan.
Is there, um, I can't really tell from the floor plan, not exactly from the um pictures either. Is there a way to create an at a doorway from the utility room to the outside?
No.
There is no, it's in the back into the.
Walkout basement, that's underground.
Okay. That's the back, the backest part, okay.
The only way you could do it would be to put in a some kind of stairwell.
Yeah.
Uh, going up to the first floor from the utility room, like a circular stair, which would give them access.
Oh, that's where the stair, okay, got it.
Or to cut a hole in the concrete wall and put a bulkhead in.
Yeah.
So if it had a bulkhead and then you could lock that door from the inside so that the landlord could access the heating things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Then I'd say, all right, then I would take it out of the square footage, but otherwise.
Okay.
No.
All right. All right, moving on, center sign policy update.
Um, I have one more new business.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, I got an email from the energy committee, um. They uh. There's an, I I said there's another company, they thought about doing an audit up at the municipal building.
Yeah.
Uh, but they also do audits for the streetlights.
Right.
Um, and the energy committee needs a letter on Town Letterhead saying Affinity LED lighting has permission to speak with Unitil regarding our streetlights. So I didn't see an issue with it, I typed up the letter, um, I signed it, it's in my office up there, I can send it on Wednesday and tomorrow.
Tell them.
Yep.
A chance.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds good to us.
All right.
Uh, both Ruth, um, Keith and Beth talked with the affinity people and.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, but they can also do, um, that's for doing the LED lighting, but they can also do another audit on the municipal building.
Yes.
They for free about the fluorescent lighting, so.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good. It'll save us money. All right, uh, center sign policy update. And I think we've got. So I think where we left it after our meeting at uh. The center was we we'd like to speak with the historic district commission to get their thoughts on. What we discussed in terms of signage, to see if they're okay with it.
And I actually have, um, I didn't bring it, um, but I thought it'd be easier if I emailed it to you. I also had a bunch of additional questions about. Kinds of signs that we will want to consider under this.
Yeah.
Like again, um, say the school, because the school had a an event for their trunk or treat and they have little plastic signs that somebody had hand lettered and they stuck one in the center and.
Got you.
You know, so I've, so there's the school, um, you know, I think we need to be clear about things like the giant pancake breakfast sign. Um, or things like that nature, and I had a list of like six or seven things that I think we need to consider. If in this policy that we need to be fairly specific.
Mm-hmm.
Um, about, so I'll I'll send that along.
Thank you. Okay, that sounds good.
And I also um just emailed you this afternoon the photos that I took that day of um the center.
Yeah.
So and then the the mockups of Calvin and what might be.
Yeah.
So I think you can get a sense of the scale and you can also get a sense of what it would look like coming up from Kimball Pond Road. And also a sense of how much information somebody might be able to, is that useful?
Right.
It looks better, but is it actually useful? So um if we can all look at that and then I think we can, actually, um, I could also send this to the HTC if they want to.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
I'll send it to um.
Yeah, Kevin and.
I'll send it to Kevin.
He can disseminate to.
Yeah.
To the the other members. All right, I don't have anything else on that.
But everything that was in the the um or the uh policy that you rewrote, Cal looks fine. Um, but you know, again, there's just a, I think, we're going to need to add to it and decide, um.
Yeah.
Cause we had also talked about, you know, needed to come in, get some approval, get a, if we do something like this.
Right.
You know, get a particular size board, but.
And if if I remember, um. Election signs, there's a specific R S A that does not allow any of us, but I think John to.
The highway department can.
Yeah.
And the police department can if they feel it's a um hazard.
Right.
Oh, like a visual thing?
Right, but if it's not, then I guess we have to call the candidate and say, you know, your sign's not allowed, come come collect it. I got thinking about that the other day.
I never, I know touchy political signs.
I'd have to check to see if a local ordinance.
Right.
Would would allow that.
Yeah.
You know, allow you guys to.
Yeah.
If if it's in the center, I pull it and I keep it at the highway garage for two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, okay.
Yeah, the the road agent is really the only one that's allowed to do it.
Right, right, okay.
It's like the beginning of uh Morale and Townland there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Pretty sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a, it's a good spot to put a sign, but yeah, I can see them come, I can go.
Yeah. Yeah, on the hill, it's it's eye level for everybody coming up and down, so. It is a great spot.
Now, is that is that little spit you're talking, well, what do they call it, the potters?
No.
The fiddlers, the fiddlers.
Fiddlers, yeah.
Land, is that little point there um from Kimball Pond onto Morale, um, is that considered part of the center? Or is historic district?
It is part of the historic district.
Right, cause Harry's house is.
Harry Kentor's house is included.
Yeah.
So, um. Do we need to, I just thought of this, does this need to be town center sign policy or town historic district? Cause that includes that little point.
It would also go all the way up to um the fire station.
Hmm.
Think we may want to make this. Specific, cause otherwise.
Yeah.
Let's con, let us consider that, cause I'm sure Calvin will want, will want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, and it's would also for uh the village, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so.
Well, if you s- if you were specific to center historic district.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's probably a good place to.
That would be the, cause if you tried to do shake the village historic district, then you may impact their signage up there.
Yeah, no, I I would, if if that little point is a popular spot for people to put things. And you know, we still, we didn't discuss at all any kind of signage on the cemetery lawn or in front of the town. All there, like where we put the cow for the farmer's market, I mean, we need to, we haven't specified. We say they're included, but we really haven't said what the, if we're going to put, like, we were thinking about here.
Right.
That's only this spot and there's a bunch of other spots around, so we need to figure that out. So there's a little bit more work to do, I think.
I agree, I think you're you're absolutely right. All right.
It was really fun to make Calvin pose next to signs and things.
All right, hey, press donation.
Yay.
So, I think I reported the last time around that we tried to get the hay press to
We were close.
The agricultural museum and they got all the way out there and decided they didn't want it.
Yeah.
Um, I contacted the, uh, the barn on the Pemi, which is the old Beverly Barn.
Hmm.
Um, and I never heard back.
Hmm.
Um. Herbie Bachelor, alongs to the East Coast Antique Tractor Club and they would like to have it and display it along with their antique tractors at fairs and other events that they go to. Um, so we would be donating it to Herbie Bachelor. Um, he would be the caretaker of it and he would display it in that club and, um.
It sounds good to me, I mean, I think that, yeah.
I think that's, yeah, so long as people are going to use it, want it, we're ready to haul it around.
Yep.
Right, have another life rather than sitting up in, you know, in their garages.
I wanna see them bail hay with it.
Back in the day.
Can't get Dave Emerson to do it at the Canterbury Fair?
Maybe.
Maybe, we'll step away from that.
Right.
It would be fun, though.
No, but I think that's a good, that's a good another life, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's a, yeah.
Alright, uh.
So he shows up with his truck tomorrow, it can be loaded? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's at the highway garage.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and I'm sure you want it to be out of there, don't you?
Unless he's tripping over it in the dark.
Fight to the death, it's dark up there.
Yeah.
What is this big black box here?
Yeah, if, if all goes well, maybe you'll be rid of it by tomorrow, so. Sounds good to me. Alright, capital improvement plan.
Yeah, and before we get into this, cause this is gonna be a little lengthy, um, fire engine bond.
Yep.
So we are going to have to take, uh, we put a deposit on the fire engine a couple of years ago.
I remember, yep.
Um, the balance of the bond is four hundred ninety thousand dollars that we need to take.
Yep.
Um, we've filled out, the application is due on Friday to the bond bank.
Okay. Yep.
Um, we've done most of the, most of the application. The only thing that we need to talk to you guys about really is the length of the term.
Okay.
We got two, um, scenarios, one a ten year and one a fifteen year. Um, the interest rate, interest rate for a ten year at this point is three point four four percent and the interest rate for fifteen year is three point nine four percent.
So a half.
So about a half a percent.
Hmm.
Um. The payments, and I had, I mistakenly asked for four hundred thousand, not four hundred ninety, but the payments on a four hundred thousand dollar loan, uh, bond would be, um, on a, on a ten year, um, bond purchase would be forty six thousand, the first year would be forty six thousand eight eighty and it drops down a little bit and at the end is, it's forty thousand six eighty eight. Um, so you could probably, you'll bump that up, cause you're going up another ninety thousand dollars. So it'd be about fifty thousand dollars to start with.
Yeah.
And then it would drop by about five or six thousand dollars over the, the, the six years, the ten year. Um, on a fifteen year term, again, on a four hundred thousand dollar bond, it'd be, the first payment would be thirty seven thousand eight eighty and the last payment would be twenty five, twenty five, twenty six thousand dollars, so.
Um, do you, did you calculate what that meant in, uh, total payout over the life, the difference between ten and thirty?
I did not.
At ten and fifteen?
Well, um, let's see.
I mean, you can.
The interest, so the interest paid on a ten year, um, on a ten year bond would be seventy eight thousand eight hundred dollars and again, this is a four hundred thousand dollar bond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On a, uh, fifteen year, it'd be a hundred and twenty three thousand two hundred seventy five dollars.
It's no small amount of change.
No.
Um, we only have one bond payment left on the, um, bridge and command car and that is it, we have no other bond payments.
Yep.
That will be due, this would be the only bond payment that we'd be paying. We're in a very good situation as far as, um, bond payments are right now, long-term debt.
Right. When, um, we're not currently putting away anything for a new fire engine.
No, but in our cap reserve account, uh, I mean, our capital improvement plan, it calls for us to start, start funding it in twenty six.
Yeah.
Particularly talking with the fire chief, the fire truck, the fire engine that is due to be delivered in May, that is eight hundred and.
I think it was eight.
Eight, it was eight twenty, but they gave us twenty thousand off.
Yeah.
Um, because we made an early payment.
Yeah.
Um, that truck now is one point two million dollars.
Yeah.
The delivery is three to four years, it may even up to five years.
Yep.
And they have clauses in the contracts now that if there are price increases unforeseen to the manufacturer, that they will pass on to the customer.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, as, as I look at the fleet, the, uh, engine that was purchased in twenty fifteen,
Mm-hmm.
looking ahead, let's say that, then not that we're gonna do this, but let's say at town meeting twenty twenty six, we got a warrant article and, and said, okay, um, we're gonna replace that twenty fifteen engine. We would not be able to replace that until twenty thirty or thirty one at the earliest.
That we'd get a vehicle.
That we would get a vehicle.
Well, it's would, five years out, right?
Right, correct.
Yeah, three to five years is what they're saying.
So that truck by that time will, will we're gonna have to start saving for.
I agree, I mean, certainly as, as we go into the budget process, that's, I think, one of the things we have to look at now and, and I'm sure you're aware that there is a congressional, US congressional investigation going on. Um, whether that, you know, has.
Goes anywhere at all.
Who knows, but, um, as we all know, it's just getting way more expensive and, and the timelines are just unbelievably long, at least in, in my opinion. Um, so I, I guess as I look at ten versus fifteen, to bring it back to tonight's discussion, I'm leaning towards ten, only because we get it paid off in ten years versus fifteen.
Well, the, the difference is like, well, with, with the lower amount that you had them, uh, quote or, you know, do the numbers on, it's forty five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Um, difference.
Yeah.
Uh, in interest payments, so, you know, we could find a lot of places to use that.
And where, with the financial situation we're in, this would be our only long-term debt.
Yeah.
And I think it would, it would really be a good idea to pay it off as quick as possible.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think that's, that's logical and well thought out, so I, I'm for ten.
I would be for ten, yes.
Okay.
Let's make it ten.
Alright. Okay. Um, and just, I guess, a little bit of home business, we did, um, we did, uh, complete the investments for the CDs.
Yeah. Very good.
Um, so that is done, um, one matures December fourteenth and the other, uh, January fourteenth.
Very good.
And then we have a plan to roll over again in January.
Sounds good.
We will keep you apprised of the interest that we're earning on that.
And they're very good at letting you know when the things are coming due.
Yes.
CD Bank.
Yes.
I got an email, I got a letter in the mail and then they called too, it's like, okay, I, I got.
Really wants you to know.
I'm up, I'm up on it.
Yep.
Alright, so moving on to the capital improvement plan.
Yep.
You guys all have a, uh, sheet in front of you.
Yep.
Um, we, this is, we made some changes since, since last time.
Yep.
I already, I also made some changes tonight that I didn't, that had, hadn't gotten done on this one.
Excuse me.
Um. So, starting at the top, um, as I talked to Rachel, said earlier, the, um, heat pumps, um, we have down to fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in two thousand twenty seven, we're gonna keep that in there, um, and again, that's fifty thousand, uh, methods of financing is fifty thousand as far as the partner goes as a property tax.
Okay.
That would be, oh, Rachel said that the trustees are hoping to fund part of that, portion of that. If that still holds true, then that would reduce that, uh, property tax burden, but that's, that's what they're looking at.
But we can't guarantee that at this time?
Correct, and we don't have a capital reserve account for that, so that would be, um, that would be a warrant article for fifty thousand dollars potentially.
Yep.
In two thousand twenty seven. Um. Replacing the water truck, moving down, replacing the water truck with a sliding water tank.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is, uh, the, the anticipated cost is eighteen thousand dollars and John would like to do it in two thousand twenty six, because the current water truck is not serviceable.
Kuputsky.
Um, and the thought would be, instead of taking that out of property taxes, we would take eighteen thousand dollars from the highway equipment capital reserve account.
Okay.
So there will be no increase on that.
Yep.
From which account, the highway reserve, what did you call it?
The highway equipment cap reserve account.
Highway equip.
Which has, as, um, August of thirty, August, uh, the end of August this year, um, we had a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and forty five dollars in that account.
Okay.
And we deposited twenty, ten thousand dollars into it last year, well, in this year.
And, um, that, uh, date, the a hundred and fifteen thousand, the amount you said as of when?
August thirty first.
Thank you. Okay.
And then the loader, um, you can see it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar anticipated cost.
Yep.
Um, I put down a hundred and sixty um, from the capital reserve and it says here ninety thousand from property tax, so that's a potential. Um, but that, um, goes out to two thousand twenty seven and possibly twenty eight, depending on if you spend the fifteen thousand dollars this year, um, to replace, to fix it, it could last another year or two.
Yep.
So if we kept it in place for two thousand twenty seven, um, we may have, uh, let's see. In August, we had, uh, the end of August, we had a hundred and eighty seven thousand nine hundred and forty one dollars in there. We deposited thirty thousand dollars this year. If, if it lasts two years, that would be another sixty thousand dollars. So we would be very close to not having to spend any property tax money on, on two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That would be nice, yep.
So, um.
If we made it another two years.
So what's been, it was fifteen thousand, put it, put fifteen thousand into the loader so that we stretch it out to having, um.
That would be the thought.
Okay. And if we put the fifteen thousand into it and it still doesn't survive? Then what?
Well, we have a hundred.
John!
We have a hundred, uh, almost a hundred eighty eight thousand dollars and so we could, we could take that hundred eighty eight thousand and, and then do the rest on property taxes.
Alright.
Or we could take some money out of the highway equipment fund, however.
We're taking some out for the water tank.
It, yes, and, um, we had, they had, they had a waste oil heater.
I remember.
It was twenty, twenty one thousand.
Yep.
Um, I've looked at prices for waste oil heaters.
Yeah.
I think that's high, I think twenty thousand would be the, the cost. Um. John and I still feel that that's a good idea.
Okay.
Um, we get rid of our waste oil now, we were, one of the local garages over Loudon was taking it, then they said they weren't going to. Um, so we found a local logger that was gonna take it, cause he has a waste oil burner, but he hasn't been able to take it the last couple of times. So the Loudon garage has decided they are gonna take it.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a hit or miss type thing for us to keep taking it or trying to get it taken for free. Um, we could install this in the highway garage up here and it would certainly help with the heating costs of that building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is one of the buildings where the doors are open and closed in the winter an awful lot and we lose a lot of heat up there and, and I think, in, in my mind, I think we would, we would be able to cut our heating bills, a twenty thousand dollar investment.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what the payback would be, I think that would have to be calculated out somehow, but, um.
Is there a way to calculate that?
I, I don't know, because, because it, it would, I think it would be difficult, because we don't, we don't have a way to separate the heat cost for that section of the building out from the rest of the building.
Hmm.
It's all, it's all fire.
But you could probably guesstimate, you know.
I would, I would think, yeah.
Just by, by.
Yeah, I mean, I could have one of the, one of the energy auditing companies
Hmm.
tell us what they think of a heat loss is on that bill, on that section of the building.
Yeah.
And we could say, okay, well, what's the heat loss? And then we could have them divide up the heat losses for the other sections and then, then figure it out that way.
Yeah, yeah. John, the waste oil container at the transfer station is still locked, right?
Yes.
So when, if I show up with a gallon or two or five of waste oil.
He, he puts it aside until he has time to pour it in himself.
Okay, does he check it though to make sure there's not like gasoline or?
So he doesn't have.
So we, we looked into testing for that and apparently the test kit is very expensive.
Okay.
Um. Uh, the last time we, we knew it was contaminated was when the company came to get it and they said,
I remember, yeah.
there's, there's something else in this and they didn't want it.
Yeah.
So we had, um, Clean Harbors come and they tested it and, and they, you know, that's their business, so that's part of their cost.
Yeah.
Um, but it is, it is expensive to do.
Yeah.
Um, so there is no, apparently there's nothing on the market that, according to, uh, Clean Harbors, um, or DES, that we could, like a, like a test strip that we could put in and check it to see if there's, um, some can, can't kind of come contaminated.
And I, so I guess a, a couple of concerns, certainly, that, that may come up is are we potentially burning things we shouldn't? And what are the environmental consequences if we do that?
Those were the first two, and also what is the, um, harm to the equipment that we may potentially be buying for twenty thousand dollars? I put environmental above that, but.
I, I really don't have the answers to those questions, um.
Okay.
Boy, I'd wanna know them before we start burning oil in there, e- even if it's good for the heat, uh, it just seems like, I mean, if, if it was contaminated enough that they wouldn't take it and somebody is throwing a bunch of who knows what?
I don't know.
PFAS in there or, or gasoline.
So I think the last time it was, uh, found that there was a combination of somebody had put, um, um, either kerosene or gasoline in it. Um, and then there was a concern that there may have been antifreeze mixed in with it somehow.
I think I remember that, yeah. Will those burn in the waste oil?
Kerosene and gasoline will.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know enough about them, particularly the newer equipment, to know, I think we'd have to talk to a vendor and see what they say.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be curious and I, I think Beth has a very good point about, you know.
Well, yeah, because I can see waste oil is going to burn in one way, but if all of a sudden you get a bunch of gasoline in there, so you're just gonna and, and the fire department will have to put out the highway department, none of that'll be good.
We'll do it.
They, oh, do it on a Monday night, they could practice, but, um, probably not something they want to do.
Okay, well, I will check, I'll check with vendors to see what, if they can give us the answers to those questions.
Yeah, please.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it is on there.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I'd like to keep it on there for now, if possible.
Alright.
Sounds good, yep, and we'll just, we'll investigate further.
Again, this is a capital improvement plan.
Yeah.
It's not anything set in stone, you can deviate from it at any time.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Um, which brings us down to the construction of the new salt shed.
Yep.
I'm not sure why that was included. Um, I don't know if it's a result of someone talking about the Aries transfer station plan or, or what, I'm, I'm not sure, but John doesn't feel we need that in there, correct, John?
Okay. I'm, I'm more than okay with removing.
Aries said it couldn't go in the highway garage, so.
Yeah.
So would, if it was anywhere, it wouldn't be in highway department anyway?
Right, really.
Okay.
I mean, the, the Aries, Aries plan has the potential of relocating it down at the transfer station.
Yeah.
But again, that's something that, that has to be that, that whole Aries report needs to be discussed further.
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna include it in this if we didn't.
I think that's, sounds fine.
So that's gone.
Yeah.
And then replace the two thousand eleven international dump truck, uh, T one. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty five with the property tax, a hundred and five, twenty five with the cap reserve. I think John and I have talked, take, take, uh, part of it out of the. In fact, we have. We have a hundred and twenty eight thousand in there now. So, and we put thirty thousand in it last. This, this spring, this summer. If we stayed with putting thirty thousand in it. If we bought it, if we had a warrant article to purchase one. And use and deposit thirty thousand in again, that would, that would give us a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And then we could fund the hundred, a hundred thousand from the, uh, highway equipment, uh, fund.
Gotcha.
I don't.
Even by taking, even by taking, uh. Fifteen thousand dollars or eighteen thousand dollars out for the, for the, um. Uh, water truck, the sliding water tank.
So, instead of you having to explain this all to me again, because I missed a couple of steps in there, Cal is taking excellent minutes, and I'll read. What you just said about the step by step, because.
It's, so it sounds like, um, it would be partially from the CRF for this. And partially from the CRF for highway equipment, and so really it would just be thirty K. Added to the CRF, so it's really.
Which we normally do.
Which we normally do, so it's in. That thirty K is what's coming from taxes, but that's a normal.
Right, there would be no increase to the tax rate because of that.
So the fact that this says a hundred and twenty five K from property taxes, no, is not.
Change that to say a hundred and twenty five, well, a hundred from the equipment cap reserve.
Okay.
And a hundred and fifty from the truck capital reserve.
Got it.
Yep.
That's what I needed. And a hundred and fifty from, oh yeah, like I can read this. Truck cap reserve. Thank you.
And then moving down to the police department, oh, I'm sorry, fire department, replacement of rescue one. We have, we have it as a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand twenty six. That's just coming here, the fire chief has said that the current rescue has some significant electrical issues. Rust issues, frame, the frame has been repaired. He'd like to, like to. Get something else, uh, uh, this year.
Okay. Good night, John, thank you.
Good night, John. He would like to, um. Take the current command car, his pickup truck. And downgrade it or, or move it to a rescue. Because the new engine will be a rescue, rescue engine, will have the extrication tools on it. And other heavy equipment rescue extrication tools, things like that. So they're not gonna need as big of a truck as they currently have. And so his thought would be to use his current pickup truck as a rescue, which would respond to medical emergencies. And other smaller rescue calls.
Yep.
And buy a new command car, which would be in the, in the, he already has. The cost of a truck is about fifty thousand, and equipment would be thirty thousand, so you're looking at eighty thousand. He said if you kept it at a hundred thousand for the cap reserve account, then that would suffice for that.
For both things, for use, for making his pickup into a, okay.
Yes.
So for the same price, his rescue, his pickup truck becomes a rescue vehicle, and we get a new command car?
Correct.
Alright, for the hundred thousand.
Correct.
Yep. It's a good plan.
And again, the, the rescue, that vehicle, uh, would not be going on as many calls as it is now.
Right.
So that's why he feels the pickup truck would suffice.
Yep.
Okay, and that's because the new fire truck that's coming in.
Engine is gonna house the heavy, uh, the rescue equipment that is now housed on rescue one.
Okay.
And if we go down to the police department next. We have, uh, unit. Uh, number three. Sixty seven thousand dollars for new police cruiser. The police chief feels he may have that in his budget, in his operating budget this year, so that's why it's in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
He's gonna wait until the end of November to, to see if that's what he can do, and then we'll have a pretty good handle on it. We, we would probably have to encumber that money, we'd probably have to get an invoice from, from somebody and encumber the money and, and. It would be delivered in twenty six at some point.
Yep.
The other thing on the dump truck was, um, that if we order in March. And this is more of the reason why John wants to order this year, or in two, two thousand twenty six, we order in March. We would probably take delivery in August sometime of a vehicle.
Yeah.
And the way equipment fit outs have been going, we would not get it until.
Yeah.
Following January or February, so that's why he feels that he needs a, a dump truck.
Yep.
So, and then.
That's the, uh, twenty eleven Dodge, I mean, the international dump and plow truck?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, um, unit number four, the other police cruiser. Uh, Justin would look to try and, uh, replace that in two thousand twenty six. And you can see the next ones are due out two thousand twenty nine.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, and just so I can finish this scribble, so if John orders the, um. The new dump truck in twenty twenty six, we might get it twenty twenty seven or twenty twenty eight?
Twenty twenty seven.
Okay.
We most likely want it to be come up actually.
Okay.
If you look further down under bond payments.
Yep.
We have the gold star bond.
Gold star shouldn't be in there.
Oh, it's not, yeah, I'm sorry, that shouldn't be gold star.
We took that out last time too.
Bridge.
Yep.
Command car cruisers.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause it's in twenty twenty six, twenty five, that was the gold star.
Yeah.
So we're down to fifty two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars in twenty twenty six.
Yep.
For a, a bond payment.
Yeah.
But we also have to include the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the fire truck.
Yep.
And we put fifty thousand dollars in there, it should not be in twenty five, it should be twen, starting in twenty six.
For the fire truck, that should be.
Fire truck.
Yep.
So nothing in twenty five?
Nothing in twenty five.
Okay.
Yep.
The, if you go further down, the, when Central Hampshire Planning put this together for us. They did not include any, any, um, it's an Excel spreadsheet, but they didn't do any, um. Formulas in any of the, so we're unsure of how they came up with some of the numbers in the lower section. We contacted them today, and they are gonna send us their formulas.
Okay.
Very good.
Um, cause I, I, Jan and I looked at it today, and I couldn't figure out where they came up with these numbers, so.
Now the new appreciation for Excel formulas, after looking at the budget and the, uh.
The only other thing on this that is not in here, as we talked about earlier, was a new fire engine.
Yep.
That we should probably include and start making payments for in two thousand twenty six.
I agree.
So.
Go under fire and rescue, we should add.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go back and we're gonna try and clean this up.
Yeah.
And get it ready for the planning board for their meeting on the twenty eighth.
Yep. That's gonna be a busy night, you, I know you're in the loop with, uh, respect to them, yeah.
Yep, so, um.
Twenty eighth is, um, Meridian's coming back?
They are coming back.
They asked for continuing.
Yeah.
So we'll try and get this cleaned up.
Yeah.
I'll send a copy out to you guys, and then, uh, send a copy to, to department heads. For a quick review, and then send to the planning board, and hopefully we can, um, all. And again, this is subject to change.
Right.
You know, um, depending on what happens.
Right.
Um, but that, that is kind of where we're at.
Does this go through the, um, budget committee as well?
It, it will, yes, absolutely.
Good.
At the twenty eighth, we have, uh, the meeting at CES with the school board at six.
Yes.
So we may be late getting here, I don't know how long, yeah.
It usually takes, they, they usually take you first thing.
Yeah.
And it takes half an hour or so.
Yeah.
At the most, it's really, the big discussion should be the budget upcoming, and, and here you go. We're looking at, you know, here's a couple of capital expenses, there is not a huge impact to the tax rate. However, if we start putting away for a fire truck.
Yeah.
And we have to build up the building maintenance account again, and a couple others that we're looking at, those are some expenses that, that we're looking at.
So, I'm sorry, Scott, when is the, um, the school board thing on, the twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth, yep, six P M. at, uh, the elementary school.
What about the public, uh, listening sessions for the?
It can't be in two places at once.
But that is happening also then, okay, just wanted to make sure, alright, so school. Somehow I didn't get school board on.
Yeah, as I said, the, the last one we had, literally, one person showed up.
I know, I was, I think it was me.
No, uh, former, uh, select board member.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so school board, six P M. that night, the twenty eighth.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, in the library, I think it's typically.
In the gym.
Gym, okay.
In the, yeah, CES gym.
Yeah.
And now we're down to select board representatives reports.
I saw that online. I looked for it carefully and I saw it.
I can't remember, who does tricentennial committee, is that you or me?
No, that's you.
I was afraid of that.
I was the second, but I can, I can weigh in, because I've been there.
Yes, you can, so let's start with that then.
Alright.
So tricentennial committee, uh, just met, and, uh. We're moving forward with a number of, of things for the tricentennial. The challenge coin design, um, Beth and I are gonna stay after tonight's meeting, and I, I think just. I wanna make sure I've got the approved design, um, to send off to the company for a revised estimate. So that's looking good, we're also looking at T-shirts.
Uh, yes. T-shirts, stickers?
Yep, stickers.
And we have a quick update from Myrna at the DMV, uh, they're texting Jeff at the sublimation, uh, shop. And, um, she'll email us when the director officially signs off, so we can start actually printing license plates. So that's.
Yep, that sounds good.
Coming along.
Yeah, and that's all I could think of for tricentennial committee.
Uh, yeah, there's background stuff, like trying to figure out how to make the, um, the online store work better on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, T, you know, we're, we're basically trying to figure out how to start raising funds to support other things. But my question is, and I'm, I'm actually glad it just came up. At some point, I think the committee is going to come to the town to ask the town to. Help fund some of their, you know, their piggy bank, they, we did get a five hundred dollar, um. Grant, grant, I guess you would call it, from the Canterbury Fund, but, you know, they keep mentioning the town's input, but I don't know how that works. And I don't know what we, where we put that, or where it comes out of, or how much they're expecting. They just kind of keep saying it, but not, I think nobody has a specific idea of what the ask might be. So I have no idea what we could offer, I mean, I think, I will wait for the committee to ask, cause we still have to come up. Um, Erin Meager is excellent as the treasurer, so she's putting together a lot of the budgeting, and at some point we'll say, okay. We've got this big event and we want to, whatever, and can the town weigh in? But what does that even come out of in, how do you even? Which pot does that come out of? Or don't we know?
Yeah.
It would, it would most likely be a warrant article in two thousand and twenty seven.
Yeah.
At the town meeting, to expend some kind of funds.
Yeah.
And it would have to come out of the property tax, it would be increased to property taxes.
There's not like, um, uh, what do you call patriotic events?
Well, we have patriotic, you know, things, yeah, we do have line item, which is the fireworks and the, um, Memorial Day. That's, that's what we have in that, that section in the town report. That's the operating expense, being a one-time expense, it would just should be a warrant article.
Okay, and that couldn't happen until twenty twenty seven, you couldn't do it?
You put something in the town, in the warrant on twenty twenty six.
Okay.
To say we wanna put, the, the thing is, you would have, if you, if you had a warrant article and it passed. For a specific sum, if you didn't spend it in twenty twenty six, you would have to have some kind of invoice. So we could encumber it to twenty twenty seven, right?
Got it.
So you could say we just wanna put fifty thousand dollars away for the, you know, uh, celebration. And then not have any way of knowing how to, you know, what you're gonna spend it on. Um, and encumber it.
Right.
That's, I, I don't, and I don't think anybody realized how that works, so I'm glad I asked, because then we can pass that along and start to, to plan for that.
Encouraging them.
The only other way you could do it is in, is in twenty twenty six, you could establish a cap reserve account, make a deposit into it. And then in twenty twenty seven, when the event happens, you spend all the money, and in twenty twenty eight. Town meeting, you do away with that cap reserve account.
And if there's anything left in it, you give it back?
You would, yeah, we'd go back to the tax forms.
Okay.
Until it jump.
That's really good, so, um, again, I'm assuming Cal's excellent notes got. Took that, and I will copy that and paste it and send it off to Heidi, Naomi, and Erin, to put in their collective.
Yeah, I think what the tricentennial committee needs to do is, is figure out something. Either T-shirt sales, sticker sales, whatever, and, and raise money sooner rather than later.
Well, and I think the, the one issue with the committee is that we're still not exactly sure what that money's going to be spent on. Um, which is why, uh, I know that, um, Naomi and Erin are very keen on people filling in those worksheets. But as far as big events, those are still nebulous enough that nobody knows what it's gonna cost to do a road or anything, so. There's still, there's still a lot to shake down.
Website from Nottingham help at all?
I don't know.
I thought I had forwarded that to you, the link to the, cause Nottingham had their tricentennial.
You're right.
Okay.
I will double check, I looked at it at the time.
And I, that listed what they did for events, they had a parade, and it was like a year-long celebration.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, yeah. That seems to be the way tricentennial is going, is a kind of a year-long celebration.
Hold on. Um, thank you for reminding me about that, I'm not sure, I know I looked at it at the time, but then I'm not sure if I passed it along, so I will make sure to. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and then moving on to planning board, so we did finish the solid waste chapter. So we need, I believe Brendan was gonna schedule a public hearing on that, so I, I have not heard the date yet, but, uh, it is done. So I'm just very happy to see that, and as you're aware, I'm sure Meridian requested another, um, continuance. So they're appearing on the twenty eighth, uh, with a revised plan, which I don't believe, have you gotten anything?
Uh, it was on my list today to contact Sam Poisey to ask, uh, him to. Submit something to. submit something to Land Use Administrator.
Yeah.
Uh, this week, so the planning board could see it before the meeting.
We need time to examine it before, yeah.
We'll be emailing Mr. Poisey tonight while I leave here, send that back up to your office.
Yeah.
Um, I did have a Zoom meeting with uh, Sam Poisey, Levi, their attorney and um, Matt Monahan from Central Hampshire Planning a couple weeks ago on a Thursday, discussed the engineers' reports.
Yeah.
They asked for a couple of changes and so um.
Oh yeah, that was gonna be my question, if that got settled finally?
I don't know that.
I guess we'll see.
In process.
When we see, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's an unknown, yeah, so. Uh, other than that, you know, and, and this is my opinion, but we continue to not have alternates show up at planning board meetings. And, and, you know, I, we barely had a quorum at our last meeting.
Well, alternates and full members.
There were, yeah, there were no alternates.
Yeah.
Uh, so we didn't, we didn't have anybody we could even have used. And I, I believe there were only six.
Yes, there were two members missing, yeah.
So, so it continues to be an issue as far as I'm concerned.
Um, and considering, concerning uh, chapter uh, nine there. Um, it, can he schedule a public hearing on it before, I mean, it's been revised and everybody's gotta read it first before he schedules a, wouldn't you be reading it at the next meeting or did you send it out already?
Um, I was supposed to finish it by the end of today, um, I did not.
Yeah.
So hopefully tomorrow I'll send it out and then you guys can all review it. If there is anything that needs changing, then you can do it at the twenty eighth
Yeah.
meeting and um, but I'll notice it for the
So then the meeting after that?
Yeah, the first November.
Okay.
And that might change. It's supposed to be November eleventh, but that's a holiday, so Jan.
I saw that, yeah, that communication as well, which. Okay, um, I can't think of anything else from planning board.
November, oh, okay, oh yeah.
Yeah, but that, right, is subject to change.
It's my parents anniversary, can't possibly have a meeting on that day. Okay.
Alright, that's all I have.
Okay, um, oh, let's start with something interesting. Uh, Conservation Commission. Um, Conservation Commission just keeps chugging along. Um, they've worked on their process for minutes, um, they took care of their budget items, they didn't have any permits. Um, they had oh, like seven things on their property management list that they took care of. Um, we are going to be consulting local hunters considering safety zone signage. Uh, because um, we weren't sure, there were signs that went up and we weren't exactly sure um, how important it was to actually have the signs or not, so there's an ongoing questioning going of local hunters. Um, they walked um, through the Briar Bush Road Town Forest with the county forester and had a good talk with him. I think at the moment, they're not, there's nothing to be done there, they didn't feel, uh, but if there is, I'm sure they'll, they'll report on that. They said they were sending their um, input to the um, on the contaminated soil ordinance uh, to the selectmen. And that if they haven't just sent an email on it, um, and it's like, our last minutes reflect what, why I thought that they were adding to it, so. I believe that it's back to the Conservation Commission talking with the planning board about that. And, and they made contact uh, at the last meeting when Ken Stern came in, so that's all set.
Very good.
Um, they have a subcommittee that's meeting and discussing um, issues related to a potential wetland setback ordinance. So they're working on that. And um, yeah, they've got workday scheduled for town properties. Um, they've got signs going up um, on um, the Skudak Trail. They, they do a good job, they chug along.
Yes, they do.
Um, the energy committee, uh, the meeting that was scheduled for October thirteenth was canceled because there was not a quorum. Uh, we are supposed to be meeting tomorrow night. Um, and we'll see if that happens because again, there's two members, there should be three for us to meet. There are two that are definitely going to be there and we don't know about the, another. So that meeting, you know, again, we'll see how that goes. Uh, but the last, um, the agenda has, you know, again, talking about the LED project or the, you know, up at the municipal center and the um, streetlights. Um, they wanna continue talking about the uh, Soul Smart um, guide for solar-friendly zoning. Um, we are, wanna talk about education initiatives in the town, like they've done several workshops, like the, the petting zoo and the, you know, uh, electric car ownership, I think they have ideas for some more of those. Um, window dressers is chugging along and that's going to be going on in November, I think. And that's the energy committee. Um, they did have uh, two members who stepped down, so Stephen Luntall and Sarah Stemfer. Um, so again, we are looking for new members. Um, I'm currently acting as, no, I'm not acting as secretary, but we don't, they have somebody who's acting as secretary. Um, and they're also talking about the solar, we talked a little bit about the solar checklist today. They still are interested in, in working with Soul Smart and coming up with a solar checklist for the town. Um, whether or not, how useful that will be, we, remains to be determined, how about that?
Yeah.
And then um, I also had the report from Jeff Baltromo about the walkthrough that he did with uh, World Energy Services. Um, and you know, as we discussed this morning, the most immediate thing that they identified is that none of the office spacing is LED. So that was a big thing that um, this World Energy Services picked out. And I think, you know, the company that, that we talked about earlier in this meeting, um, they're gonna talk to about that. So that's the, that's the energy committee. CCPC Edgar, here we are. Um, our photo needs to be redone, we had a photo op, apparently we were all grim and horrible looking, so we have to have our photo retaken. I'm not sure how bad we could be, but
Keep your old drink before.
Paul has cursed, no good, alright. Uh, so we're still, um, we had Edgar's report on transferring the adder funds and we have to figure out what to do about the warrant article to accept those funds, which are going to be sitting in the general fund until uh, March. Um, and how we can, um, what kind of wording we can use so that maybe we don't have to do that every year, should we get adder funds? We will talk about that. Um, Beth McGwin uh, gave a report on uh, the, there's a big long a- acronym which is ASPIRE. I do not know what it means, but it's a, a CPC NH um, program to attract local renewable energy projects. Um, she's going to their workshop or their seminars to find out more about that. Um, there didn't seem to be any new projects coming down from CPC NH that, that the town could take advantage of. Um, we're continuing to plan for town education about how to choose rates. So there's, doesn't seem to be many people, if anybody, opting up to the rate that has an adder. And we also need to, um, we're trying to investigate how um, people new to town actually get on community power. Cuz we don't really know. I mean, so they come in, they set up their account with Unitil or whoever, when do they actually get on to see to community power? We don't know, but we're going to find out. That's one of our tasks.
Really good question, actually.
Yeah, and then uh, new member prospects, um, CCPC really does need new members. I'm currently acting as secretary there and there is no chair. So we have to, um, we have to take care of that sooner rather than later.
Yep.
And that's energy, CCPC and conservation. That does it for me, I think, and tricentennial.
Right.
Everybody chugging along, but new membership really is, if anybody out there is listening. Uh, um, you know, educating, uh, at the moment, that is uh, community power's biggest
Yeah.
goal.
I think you could pick.
Is to get people to.
Most committees in this town and that would be the biggest, you know, we, we need new members, I think, we'll.
Well, when you get into the point that you can't function, that's because you don't have a quorum, that's
Yeah.
that's, that's not helpful.
What else?
The only other thing I have is, you gotta copy the P and L.
Yes, indeed.
Um, please take some time and go through it.
Yeah.
Particularly in the areas of uh, equipment maintenance or those highway and fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. You got anything else, Beth?
Um, yes, I was just looking to see if I could locate the P and L that I should have here, but I think I've got it in my other pile of stuff. That's all that stuff. Um, did you talk with the folks in the building in Concord where you work with the lighting sensors?
Yes, so the um.
That probably should have asked you that when we were talking about lighting sensors earlier, but.
So the high bay areas of that campus do not have motion detectors.
Ah.
And I think it, the um, motion detector project that the state did in that campus was done probably five years ago now. And I don't think back then the technology existed.
Okay.
So it is in every other office, bathroom, classroom, it, it's everywhere else except for the high bay areas, which is the firehouse.
Oh, okay.
So, and, and it works fine. Um, they do, they have completely switched over to LED lighting. Um, and I forget how much it's saving the taxpayers, but it's significant just for that campus. So, um, you know, we have occasional glitches with the um, motion detectors, however. And I think I, I talked about, you know, people that remain in the bathroom for a period of time.
Or what, the broom, the broomsticks in the?
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and the only other thing I had was, did we get, um, we're going to see if we could get some more information, and by we, I mean the, the royal we. Um, more information from Representative Kimbrils, re- about HB three fourteen that they asked us to write a letter about and then we said, do we or don't we, or has that gone past the letter of writing?
I haven't um, sent out those questions yet.
Alright.
Cuz I have it on my to-do list to ask NHMA and
Okay.
um, well, actually, I should probably first look at the result of the, that they talked about.
Yeah.
Um, to see if it is still alive.
Right.
Okay, that was the only other thing, when I was scrolling through the minutes, I found it really helpful to read the draft minutes and say, oh yeah, we were gonna ask about
Right.
again, the royal we. Um.
Yeah.
But it's, it's very helpful to um, jog my memory, but I will track down, thank you, that link that you carefully sent me to Nottingham Tricentennial. And um, off we go.
Cool, alright, I'm gonna come motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All those in favor, alright? We are adjourned.
Thank you as always, one and all.